The Jim Bracy requests to amend conditional use permit allowing restricted office in R2A at 831 Donaghy. Who do I have to speak in favor of that? If you could approach this podium there and state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Mr. Chris Thrombry.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Bracy, if you'd be here to line up apartments in the R2A at 831 Donaghy. We came here to remember what that was. I put it in there as well, now. First conditional use permit, and it was for us. And I have sold that business. And now the property is vacant, and we have a lease site in the yard. We just don't have ourselves. What y'all call this, but somebody knows to know that we have to come back. Ask if that reapproved. So, we're asking to, however you word it, to have an open quiet office approval, I guess. That's what we're doing.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Thrombry?
So, if I'm understanding the notes correctly, what was approved originally was a therapy and rehab solutions, and what you're wanting to lease in that is something of similar nature?
Yeah, any kind of quiet office, doctor, lawyer, tenant, firm, whatever. Something out of the retail.
Okay. So, you don't have anybody lined up now?
No.
Okay. Perfect.
Why are you not just asking to rezone it to O2?
I think that's what I did. First thing we came. I mean, that's great. I didn't know that would be appropriate.
I just wondered.
It's a quiet office.
Quiet office.
Yeah, that would be my preference. We could, if you have to come back and ask for that.
Yeah.
It really has what Donaghy study recommends, is a restricted office and using the buildings that are there as a person in that way. Some of those do, with the conditions and the intent of the restricted office, the relationship owner bollocks down and builds something that may not be as appropriate as transition.
I got you.
As Donaghy becomes more of a college district and more commercial or whatever, then that's probably the best way to go before you come up with a whole nother specific plan for the area or something like that. But right now, the conditional use process will seem to the way to still have a handle on it and let it transition, but not create traffic jams or inappropriate conditions or any of that kind of stuff.
And it keeps it just to that person, too?
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be specific.
A lot of times.
You can look at and every make the condition, which is restricted office. It's not an automatic, you have to give them.
So, this request was just to remove the limitation for therapy and rehab solutions?
Not that.
And leave it open to any, does it leave it open to any quiet office that wanted to move in?
That's the intent of his proposal tonight.
Is this in the historic district?
No.
So, the Conway Development, so the historic district commission does oversee any new construction, if you add on or if the order there is down, what they built back, you have to give the historic commission approval.
Okay. So, just so everybody's aware, on page 22, the actual items that are on the conditional use permit that are approved are basically everything except for, so you have hours of operations that are Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but primarily normally, normal business hours. Sinage is restricted. Architectural compatibility is listed out. Lighting, parking, screening, buffering shall minimally match Conway Development Review standards. There's sidewalks already on the property. And then there's no additional front yard parking allowed, and trees must remain unless diseased or damaged would be the remaining conditions on the conditional use permit.
The big tree that we discussed last time came down in the storm. I guess the property to our north, we've got some, I was saying they've got a Sony throw to for that building office or whatever, so. And then also on the property, we discussed that doing studies, and that's a, this one you just heard that through. I'm happy to do whatever comes to me.
All right. All right. Let us, let us see if there's any other feedback. Thanks, Chris. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anybody opposed?
I think Mr. Stovall's coming up.
Oh.
I was looking at Stovall, and I'm a neighbor, and Chris is a good neighbor, and I don't see any difference in the street. Basically, it's already been operating this way. Battle with the long-term plan, so I haven't taken that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak in favor? Anybody in opposition? All right. Seeing none, I'll call this back into commission. Commissioners, what say you?
We just normally don't do a conditional use unless we know what's going in there, but, I mean.
I would say, just to that, to the who can occupy it, are we really changing it much other than saying who can occupy it? If all the other conditions apply?
No. I mean, the last conditional use was for therapy and rehab, and we don't know what's going to go, what number four is going to be on the next conditional use.
It has to be a restricted office use, though.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have any problem with it. I'm just saying we don't normally do a conditional use unless we know what's going to be there.
If this was, if this was to come in front of us as O2 today instead of conditional use permit, I would still say that it was inappropriate transition.
Absolutely.
Of the neighborhood, congruent with what we've been planning for this spot, for this area. So, if removing condition four allows us to keep it that way and maintain a little bit of control, then I see no issues with it.
So, it's going to say restricted office and not have any sort of description, we're just going to remove?
It will remain as conditional use restricted office with those seven conditions that remain until somebody has to change it.
Well, and to Ann's point, I would say we typically would not grant an opened conditional use permit without knowing what was going to be there. In this case, I think these guys have had someone there. We know that this works there, right? Because it's been there for a while.
Four years.
We know that the neighbors can tolerate it, right? We just heard from one. So, I don't see someone else moving in there disrupting it, right?
Yeah, and Chris is still going to own the property, so he's not selling it, so not to worry about.
Right. So, we're not really changing anything here, but just the tenant.
I think with the other conditions that are attached to the permit would kind of restrict anything other than quiet office.
Yeah.
So, one of the things you could do is, in order to, if you were, I guess you could limit it to the owner group.
Chris Thrombry.
Limited to what?
As long as, you know, they didn't sell it, right? Then they would have to.
Oh, okay.
I don't even know that that's necessary.
I don't know that it's necessary.
I think this is. I would say if you keep having to come back before us, though, I'd just do it to O2.
Yeah, I mean, if you come back again, I would definitely.
Yeah.
I mean, I make a motion to approve it with the exception of the four.
But I'm, yeah.
What was your motion? Sorry.
It was Wendy's turn.
Oh, I'm sorry. My turn.
He made a motion. Sorry.
I made a motion to approve it with the, you know, exception of the four.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve with the, with the previous condition, with previous eight conditions with the exception of number four. Previously, eight approved conditions, with the exception of number four, which was this conditional use permit shall be limited to therapy and rehab solutions. We're going to strike that one. It has been seconded. Any more discussion?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. The next item on the docket, request for conditional use permit to allow restricted office. Kike and Doll request for conditional use permit to allow restricted office in R2 for property located at 2470 Tyler Street. Is someone to speak in favor? If you could give us your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Kerry Kike and Doll. I reside at 208 Pickwick. Business partner, I am purchasing this project, or this house. Contingent on, I don't know how we can get it for restricted office. The house is next to the old Briarwood swimming pool. Sits off the road about 147 feet. Doesn't have any street frontage, but it does have the driveway and the easement of the driveway. Our plans are to, we have a construction management company, and so our plans are to move our offices there. We don't have any employees. We don't build anything there. It's just where we have our offices. We manage our projects. We do 142, 175 projects a year. So, we turn the house into our offices. Has a 30 by 40 shop that we use to store our equipment. But our long-term plans are completely remodeling, updating, putting a driveway in, so.
What type of equipment would you be storing? Is this inside the facility?
Inside the storage facility.
Okay.
Inside the 30 by 40 shop.
Okay. So, okay. It would all be contained?
Chalks, tile walls, everything, yes. Eighty-five percent of our projects are subbed out, so we use subcontractors. The rest of them are in-house subcontractors that we have a couple of different tools. We need the space right now spread out in two different locations.
And how many employees do you have?
We have no.
You don't have any?
You have no employees.
Any more questions for Mr. Kerry?
So, who's going to work there? That you're going to bring employees from your other offices there?
No, no, no. We have other storage facilities that we have our various equipment, but we don't have any employees. So, it's just going to be our offices where we sit and manage, we put together our estimates, and care of our business.
It's just him and one other guy?
We're not as a house, we're just going to use the bedrooms of our offices, so any time we decide to sell it, then it can go back to its residence.
Okay.
Right, and it's usually restricted office.
Thank you.
So, typically with a conditional use permit, as with the previous applicant, we usually discuss hours of operation that are appropriate. What do you see as what you plan to have as hours of operations for your business?
We don't have any customers that come to our office.
Yeah.
So, we don't have a set time that they can, we're open from 8:00 to 5:00 or anything like that. I typically wouldn't get to the office before 8:00, and typically would be there after 5:00. But again, most of my responsibilities are inside and don't have anything to do with the outside. We don't build cabinets, we don't paint, we don't do anything like that. So, as far as running saws, I would suspect we would be even moving equipment from our storage room anytime prior to 4:00. Start on any projects in town before 7:00 because of the ordinance.
And are you typically a Monday through Friday operation, or do you have weekend business?
We prefer Monday through Thursday, but we do work after 5:00.
That's my kind of work. I like it.
I've never known a contractor otherwise.
No, I would say I won't go to the office on Saturday, but.
Yeah.
As far as working.
So, you're not going to have any signage? You're not really going to, you're just going to be working in those bedrooms and putting stuff in that storage room?
Probably get a cup of coffee out of the kitchen.
Well, there you go. Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's far back.
But everything's contained.
Yeah.
It is. Way back there.
We don't need to sign on the street, though even the CO2 allowed you to hack that. We don't need to sign on the street. We're not going to have to sign on the building. We've got to update it.
Are you going to get that water slide back operational or any? Be part of this? Thing was fun.
Yeah, it was fun.
Yeah. Is there a TENS score back there? Really?
Any more questions for this gentleman? All right, sir. Let us, we'll let you know if we need anything else. Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? All right. Anyone to speak in opposition?
I'm just going to be living in that house.
My name is George Bass, and I am speaking for TD Paul Clark, owner of Briarwood at 248.
Can you? Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Biggest opposition that we have with this use is when Mr. Clark granted that easement, his sole purpose for doing it is for someone to get to that home. But that easement thinking that's going to be very limited to anybody coming through there. Wasn't going to be a business there. It was going to be used for a home, and that's the reason he granted that use. Second of all, hopefully we get the pool going again, and it's up and going, and there's kids running around there, or somebody's running 140 to 170 jobs. There's going to be people coming through there, equipment being delivered, picked up, and I don't think that's a safe situation for kids. So, that's our opposition. We don't see that it's anything that would be safe for, you know, the kids that are coming to swim, and that was not anticipated when the easement was granted originally.
Any questions?
There's currently a road there. That road would have to be moved, moved over to the far side, but it's actually not. Still, we don't see that that would be a great situation for equipment. 140 jobs, and there's only one person at a house, seems to be a little.
All right. Any more questions? Thank you, sir.
I didn't pay attention. There's a fence around the, around the swimming pool, isn't there?
Yeah. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing if there is none, I'll call this back into commission. Commissioners, what are your thoughts?
Well, he said eighty-five percent of it's subbed out, so basically he's sitting there doing bids and adding 10% to it or whatever he adds to it, and never sees any action other than faxing a quote or emailing a quote. I mean, physical action, right? Isn't that what y'all understood?
Yeah.
I understand that the people wouldn't actually be coming to the business.
Right, right. He's talking about equipment coming in and out of there, though.
Yeah.
But, and, I mean, they're doing 15% of 140 to 170 jobs themselves. Is that right? Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to get that clear.
In my insurance business, I've referred their business, like some work, and I've never seen Kerry hit a lick, so. I mean, I don't think they're doing any work. I think it's pencil pushing is what he's doing. And so, I'm not worried about the traffic. You know, I grew up going to this pool, and I'm glad to see that they're going to get it back open. I am. I think it's going to be great.
I'm tickled to death, yeah. It was my babysitter in the summers.
But I just don't, I don't think what they're doing is what the owner of this pool is picturing.
I think we need to focus more on the fact that it's sort of a, just kind of a commercial in the midst of.
Yeah.
Can we get a point of clarification, though? Just, are the subs picking up the equipment back and forth?
The only thing that, the only thing the sub would do would be move any piece of equipment from the storage room out to the project.
Yes. And then they would bring it back once they're.
Yeah, but they would be right there on the road, which is. The way the pool, the way the slides, the way they're.
Based off of the jobs, I'm sorry. Based off of the jobs that Ann was mentioning as force of percentage breakout for this particular location, do you have any type of estimated trips per day or per week, or what would that traffic look like, just for equipment back and forth?
I think the planning commission actually did a good job on the agenda part of it.
Yes.
They did 22, 44.
Trips? Okay. So, that's, that's it? So, you're in agreement with that?
That's minimal.
Friday would be our busiest day.
Okay.
Our subcontractors driving in and picking up a check.
Got you.
In the outbox.
Okay.
And then it's driving back out. Like I said, we don't, we don't have a kitchen showroom, we don't have a bathroom.
Yes.
We don't have any of that stuff for a customer to come to our office to.
Sit down and have a, yeah.
We're pushing across their kitchen table, explaining what we do.
I think if we put this conditional use as to just this person, like we've done on some of the others, to where we have control over it if somebody changes hands, I'm.
Which is what he was mentioning, yeah.
I mean, I'm not worried about hours or signage or any of that sort of stuff.
I think so.
Anyway.
Just for the. Is there, is there a fence around Briarwood?
Yes.
By the access road to that home?
No, there isn't. I guess, I guess we could always put on a fence.
We probably need to make sure that they move their road to where it's on their easement.
Yeah, I've got the, I've got the survey, and it's actually not there. The road would have to be moved.
Yeah, we can make sure that that happens.
But they would pretty much have to do that.
Yeah.
Having some sort of like a buffer between, or like a fence or something that would keep, if it's, that'd be necessary? I don't know.
I don't even think that's necessary.
I don't either. That's a long way to make a fence.
It's a long way.
Way back.
The parking for the, the swimming pool, when it gets up and running.
Yeah.
And there's a fence around the pool itself for security reasons, and.
Yeah.
I just don't see as it being an issue. Even in the height of summer, on the busiest day, any amount of subcontractors that would be going back there, I just really don't see it being an issue.
It gets pretty full during summer, parking.
There's a lot of traffic on that road, anyway.
Yeah, there is.
I make a motion to approve with it being limited to this applicant.
Are there any conditions?
That's your, that's your only condition?
I mean, hours of operation, I don't think are a problem. Like I said, seeing Kerry, he's going to be writing checks, is what he mostly does, so I just don't. And I, signage, I don't think they're even planning on putting a sign up, so I don't have a problem with that. I don't.
Can we at least do Monday through Friday, 7 to 5?
I mean, I really don't care if a guy comes and picks up a check on Saturday. I just don't, really.
That's not really the operation, though. That's.
I just, I just.
I mean, unless the business just explodes and he does make a showhouse or whatever.
Yeah, that's fine. If you want to put Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, that's fine. I just don't think it's necessary.
I'm just thinking about, for the neighbor's sake.
Also, I worry about the pool itself, just, I mean, I don't know.
I think we're ways away from that pool in these conditions.
Well, the pool's not even open right now.
I know that, but I'm just saying, just say it does, say, you know, because I'm just thinking about the safety of.
We can only deal with what we have now.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think he has, I mean, lighting, signage isn't going to be an issue. My main thing is it's just limited to this person, so, I mean, he's, he's not changing anything structurally to this house. He's not, you know, I just don't see an issue with it.
So, limited to applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve this request and that the condition be limited to this applicant. It has been seconded by Arthur. Any other discussion?
There were, there were no conditions.
Just that it was limited to this applicant.
Yeah, okay. Got you.
Any further discussion? All right. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Abstaining.
All right. I'll show hands. Alls in favor, raise your hand. All right. Poses? All right. Passes.
One abstention.
Two. Seven to two and one abstention?
Yep.
Yes.
Good luck. The next item on the agenda, counseling associates, request for conditional use permit to allow restricted office in MF1 at 855 Salem Road.
Brian Davis, 350 Salem, Conway, Councilon Associates. And essentially what we're wanting to do, we have owned the property that's in question at 855 Salem. It's a small apartment complex. It's a HUD project that we've operated for probably 25, 30 years. There's 20 units there. There's a small clubhouse, about 1,000 square foot building, and a day program room. The residents that are there have typically participated in a day program that we operate from 1622 Donaghy, a building that we own there. We're selling that building, and so we would like to just be able to offer their day program to the residents, like there are the apartments and the clubhouse, the community rooms there. So, it'll be the same. We're not going to do the signage, there's no construction needed. We just simply wanted to use that little clubhouse area to do a day program, two days a week, simply going to be vacated in front of Donaghy.
The one that's up by Corner Pantry? That's the one you're leaving?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then you're still going to have your offices at 8?
350.
350.
Main clinic, yeah.
Yes, okay.
The only thing that will operate from 855 Salem is the.
That one day?
Weekday program for the residents of that.
Got you.
Since we won't have the building on Donaghy.
And those day programs have typical hours of operation, correct? So, they're not going to go late into the evening? They're going to, not going to start early in the morning?
No, it's typically 9:00 to 3:00, about what it is. And right now, it's two days a week, Monday and Thursday.
Okay. And I'm assuming that you have some permission from the property owners at this apartment complex, right?
They own it.
Oh, you own it? You own it? Okay, got you. Sorry. I missed that. Got you. So, you do have permission?
He grants himself permission.
Grant yourself permission. Got you. Fair enough. Any other questions for Mr. Davis?
Good.
All right, sir. Thank you. Thank you. That's my unintelligible one. Anybody else to speak in favor of this? Anybody to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing then, I'll call this back into commission.
It is, it is a fairly simple request. It's essentially granting them legal use of their property. They're coming before us to ask for the permission. They're not asking for anything out of the ordinary. However, seeing as this is a conditional use permit, I do think that we should make them get additional use that limits this to the applicant. If they were ever to sale or move away from the property, that the conditional use is void, because I obviously would want to control anything else if this property ever was sold or changed. I don't think that we need to put hours of operations on there, but I'm open if someone feels some kind of way.
I don't think so.
So, I will make that motion. So, I make a motion to approve with the only conditional use, or with the only condition being that the conditional use permit stays with the applicant.
I second it.
I made it before you did, no?
It's okay.
Throw a pin at me next time.
No, 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 I'm just seconding.
She likes to second.
So, there's a motion on the floor to approve this with one condition, that it is limited to the applicant, it was made by Justin, was seconded by Wendy in her last meeting. All those, any more discussion? Sorry, almost...
Gonna miss Wendy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Good luck.
All right. Next item.
Moving on up.
Files Request to Rezone From R1 to Residential PUD, Property Located at 1630 Bill Lucy Drive.
My name is Tim Todd of Todd Group and 24th Skyline Drive here in Conway, and Mr. and Ms. Fowles is here also, in case there's any questions, but what we are doing, we, Mr. and Ms. Fowles bought this piece of property, it's about eight and a half acres, they bought it in with the intentions of building R1 housing on it, and through the process of substituting it and looking at it, the Masters Creek Plan is coming into play, and the Masters Creek Plan, it's got a 60-foot swath of the middle of the property, pretty close to the middle of it, so we had to take that into consideration, that was not necessarily revealed until when they bought the property, it is buyer beware, you know, typically, but they do, they are, they are gonna deal with that, but within dealing with that, they go into an R1-type situation, it was going to limit their amount of lots considerably, and they're gonna have to put in a bill to build that 60-foot, or actually, Lecter Street going north and south without any use per se with their houses, so that's through the process of doing this. Looking at it, we basically come back and we tried to meet everything we could under R1 situation, 6,000 square foot lots, setbacks and so forth, the things that are different is, it's still gonna have a 27-foot wide street, typical of an R1 residential street, but you got a 40-foot right-of-way instead of, or you're gonna have, you're gonna see a plaque, I think, that's in your package, a proposed plaque that'll be coming in to the passage next month, with 40-foot right-of-ways on the interior, but now that 40-foot right-of-way is gonna be scheduled, it's still gonna have a 27-foot street, it's just the right-of-ways and the sidewalks still be there, everything will look the same, but because there is a minimum of 100 feet depth under R1 housing, we tried to meet that, so to be able to meet that, we had to go to 40-foot right-of-ways and so forth, so there's a few things, like the 40-foot right-of-ways, the side yard setbacks, we're going to typically, you want 25 feet, a couple of this, we're gonna reduce them to 15-foot side yard setbacks, front yard is still gonna be 25-foot front and rear, so it's typically pretty much all gonna be R1 housing, and if you look in your list, there is a, and anytime you do a PUD, you have to do a recommendation, or you have to do a conditional use list, if you look in your package, you see approximately 14 items that's in the condition, they wanna meet those conditions, so everything in here is basically just like R1 housing, it will be R1 housing, no biffaxes, no townhomes per se, no, nothing other than R1 housing, and also, they are going to have to build that corridor from the south going to the north. We did have a public hearing last week, there were, I think, three people showed up for it, they had some concerns, did not know what was going on, or what was gonna happen, the meeting lasted pretty much every bit of 10 minutes, after we told them and we showed, they showed them the elevation plans of the houses, how they were gonna be kind of a ranch-style, farm-style type house, and with steep slopes on the roofs and so forth, and everybody was satisfied, and we were going to that public hearing within 25 minutes, so it didn't last very long, and they were, everybody was satisfied, so, other than that, this is the reason for the PUD, we just could not meet all the R1 stipulations, but we tried our best, but some of the things created this, threw this into a PUD situation. If you have any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them, Mr. and Ms. Fowles is here later.
So, for the records, commissioners, the connected property that you see in the dotted blue section to the north on page 29, which states Conrad Court Preliminary Subdivision, that is part of what we reviewed in the subdivision preliminary hearing earlier today, and that we've made recommendations for approval, you see that 60-foot right-of-way blue strip that connects the two properties, it just so happens that these are being developed at the same time, and this will allow full connectivity between the two properties, that will allow seamless flow to go on and create some connective, connectivity between all the surrounding properties as well, so, while I do agree that, while I do see that there are some weirdness to the drawings and double frontage lots and things that this will create, keep that in mind as you consider the rest of the comments.
Indeed.
Guys, can I respond to the double frontage lots? The double frontage lots are just because, we have to do that a lot of times, we had that discussion earlier, there's nowhere around it, but there will be denied access, you know, from the, those lots, if you see like 26, 27, and 28, we're gonna have to deny off the Lecter Street, the, everything will be coming into the interior, even though along Bill Lucy Drive on the, on the lots to the south, we'll be denying access to those Bill Lucy side of the drive.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, anybody else to speak in favor of this?
Those who are in favor.
Duly noted.
Duly noted.
I've got some numbers missing on here, that's my only complaint.
Lot number two and lot number 25 are missing.
No, I'm kidding, I know y'all made those into one big lot instead of probably...
The reason is, we have a single entry subdivision, and it's filled, and though, when we have the simultaneous subdivision, the north's gonna be coming in, we'll actually split those lots back out, we couldn't show more than 30 lots to get it right now, and as the development comes in from the north, then those lots will be replated into two different lots, like it should be, where we can get more than 30 lots of the double entry.
All right.
Okay.
Beat me with this, I didn't even notice it.
Four numbers missing.
Sure, no. I see it now.
Anybody else?
Right here. 2, 11, 13, and 25.
Yep.
Just gonna turn our microphone on here. Because of that, I suggest that we look at number, let me get my brain on it again, number 11, and we might need to do a little fixing on there, because it says the PUD generally shall be, the PUD shall be generally developed as shown on the submitted site plan, minor variations from the submitted plan shall be allowed for technical reasons, however, the density and intended plan shall be followed, so actually, we'd be adding a little bit more density to it, so, just so everybody's all on the same page, I think we should...
Number lots.
Fix that, and I'm not sure exactly how yet, but I think PUD shall be generally submitted as shown on submitted site plan is okay, minor variations from the submitted plan shall be allowed for technical reasons. I mean, we're gonna go for 34 lots eventually, so we could just say limited to 34 lots or something like that, and I think that would work.
I think that would work, too. We're not gonna get no more than four more lots, because that's what we had before, and that's 6,000 square feet and all that other stuff in consideration, I think Brian's correct, if we could modify that 11 to where we would be no more than 34 lots, it would probably be fine.
I'd say maybe strike the last sentence and just put maximum density of 34 lots.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
It's all in the details.
Fairly much so. I mean, we probably could've worked through that later, but it's easier just to get it all on page right now, and everybody square where we're at with it, so...
Yeah, agreed.
Absolutely. All right, is there anyone to speak, anyone else to speak in favor? All right, anyone else, anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing there is none, I'll call this into commission. Commissioners, what say you?
I don't have a problem with this, looks good.
I don't either, I think the, the minimum square footage of the house is mentioned in suggestion, condition number two, which is 1,600 square foot minimum, all the other conditions that are mentioned, the quality of the materials, the ceiling heights are normal things that we would request, I think do, as stated, due to the uniqueness of the property and how it's gonna connect to the other properties, they're willing to make some concessions, so I see no problem, I guess my Grinch, my ways have gone away, I don't really see any problems with it.
All right.
They wanna leave the, make sure we get the density 34 in.
Yeah.
I'm gonna let Wendy make that motion.
No, I'm not making that motion.
Body maker.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the 14 conditions, an amendment to number 11, limited to a maximum 34 lots.
And I will second that.
There you go.
Very good.
All right, here's a motion on the floor, to, in the favor, to approve this with the 14 conditions, with the exception that number 11 be amended to say, but shall be generally developed as shown on the submitted site plan, minor variations from the submitted plan shall be allowed for technical reasons, maximum, with the maximum density of 34 lots. Has been, you? Brian?
Wait, go on, lie.
Sorry. Brandon made the motion, was seconded by Wendy, sorry. Any, any other discussion? All right, call this to a vote, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
Good luck, guys.
You, too.
You, too. Thank you.
All right. The next section of our agenda items, discussion. Plan Commissioner selection approval. So, did they approve our two candidates?
They approved both.
Good job.
Congrats.
We have a council meeting, remember here?
Yeah, they are, they're listed in E1. So... Latisha Sanders-Jones and Brian Townsend.
So, the council approved Brian Townsend and Latisha Sanders-Jones, so, what I need is for you guys to elect a new chairman, a vice chairman, and a secretary.
I'll make a motion to make Justin Brown the chairman.
There's a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And a second.
And a third.
To elect, to make Brian, I mean... Make Justin Brown the chairman.
Let's do it all at once, let's get it figured out and do it all at once, how about instead of voting each other?
That wasn't the motion.
Trying to go wrap presents, come on, Jerry.
He's trying to hold on to power as long as he can.
Hey, I don't want the meeting to be extended, but that wasn't the motion.
Motion's all day for him.
You wanna rescind your motion so he can wait?
Brian?
What?
Who's rolling off in 2019?
Who wants to be vice chairman?
Who's rolling off in 2019?
Brandon Rule, I make a motion to Justin Brown, Brandon Rule, and anybody else wanna jump on a grenade?
Are you, are you rolling off, too?
He's rolling off with me.
No, I got one more year, I'm not doing nothing. I'll sit right here.
Someone's gotta be secretary, somebody's gotta monitor the...
I vote Beth.
Okay, then, yeah, I say Brandon for, for co-chair.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Justin, Brandon.
Who wants to be secretary? I think Delancia is good.
Delancia, do you wanna be secretary?
Yes.
No.
No.
So moved.
Secretary, oh, yeah, just keep Tom.
Keep Tom.
Oh, yeah, you so moved, Delancia.
I'll go to pay your aye.
Justin and Brandon.
This is an unfair situation.
Think you're getting railroaded.
It's fun, secretary's fun.
It is fun.
There's really not much to it.
You have to stop talking.
Yeah.
During our homeless shelter days, that was a fun time.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
If you really don't wanna do it, just say...
No, 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 I'll do it.
Because I was gonna agree to it.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
I made my three, Justin Brown, Brandon Rule, Delancia Herbie.
And it's all about him. All right, so there's a motion on the floor.
Wendy seconded.
To nominate Justin as chairman, Brandon as vice chair, and Delancia as secretary.
I second that.
Wendy as second, any more discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, 2019 officers.
Woo!
Now, Mr. Chairman, have you figured out the committees? Because outgoing chairman have to do that, you have to figure it out and make, I mean, I did it.
Now, you tell me.
I did it, you can do it, too.
Now, my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, the annexation committee, conditional use committee, and the zoning committee have not met once in my four full years...
Correct.
On this board. The subdivision...
Zoning did once.
Zoning meet once.
Zoning did once.
The subdivision is the most active committee, obviously, my recommendation, if he will accept it, is that Brandon Rule be the chairman of that subdivision committee, I believe his, his expertise and knowledge has served us well so far, he will do fantastic in leading up that committee.
I'm good with that.
I agree.
There's some succession.
Yes. My second recommendation is that I'm not required to be on that thing.
Who's not on it this year? Okay, so, Arthur?
Me.
We can put one of the two new incoming commissioners on there?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
You're getting off the subdivision?
I nominate Brian.
Brian Townsend?
I'm out. I have other roles and responsibilities that you didn't want.
Okay.
And then...
Can we keep one of those, one of the other members on there?
Delancia.
I don't want Brian to be, or Brandon to be the only person that's still on there.
I'll stay in there, it's my last year, I'm not staying in there.
Ray has done well, obviously, on the, she's made every single meeting. Brandon, Brian, Ray.
Or Delancia hasn't been on it.
Delancia has not been on it as well.
Or Brian could stay. Brian, you can take my spot, I'm good with that.
On subdivision? I'm on subdivision.
I know, but we're talking 2019.
Yeah, I'll just stay on there.
Okay, take me off and put Delancia on.
I didn't have you on there.
You weren't on there last year.
I had myself on there, you're not taking over.
This is my show.
Rock it out, man.
Delancia.
So, Arthur, Delancia, Brian, and Brian?
Yes.
Okay, and Brandon is the chair.
Yep, that makes the five.
Yeah, so the rest on can just be...
If we have to stay on...
The rest of them, we just have to replace you and Wendy, wherever we see your names.
Yeah, put the two new ones on.
I'll be off the subdivision.
Well, the name, Brian Townsend's on subdivision, so he can only go on one more.
Yep.
Well, Brooks?
Brooks wants to...
Well, I mean, I've been on it, I think, if not every time.
Subdivision.
I know I've been on it last two times, were you on there or off of there that time?
We just did subdivision, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, you can be on one of the others.
Put Brooks where Wendy was on conditional use.
I'm making Ann the chair of zoning, because I like her.
She is the chair, you stay in the chair.
Oh, yeah, she's staying chair.
That whole thing can say the same, except for your name comes off.
Yeah, we can swap me out with Latisha.
Yep.
Latisha here.
And then annexation, two people.
I can be on either.
Brooks will pick up one of those.
Well, Justin.
Brooks and Justin?
Yeah.
Yeah. Brooks.
Sounds good.
Brian remains chair.
Brooks and that Brian T.
Let's swap the other two.
Brian T, oh.
Yeah. Him being chair, he doesn't really need to be on... Him being chair, he doesn't really need to be on any of the deals if you don't want to.
What?
No, I have to be on two.
You do. Just do your own.
It will be.
He's saying Brian Thomas.
Conditional use.
Brian, are you gonna stay on annexation?
Probably annexation.
I'm just staying where I'm at.
On annexation?
Annexation and subdivision, yep.
Okay. And so, we're adding Brooks and, and Brian Townsend?
To annexation.
To annexation.
Then on conditional use, Delancia has to come off, 'cause she's already on two, and Wendy has to come off.